Alder Person Manley.
Here.
Alder Person Ricky.
Here.
Alder Person Steiner.
Here.
And Alder Person yours.
Here.
And Mayor Hockamer is absent and excused this evening.
Thank you. Under item five, I'd need a motion for approval of the minutes if you've had a chance to review them. Oh, excuse me. We do have a couple people in the audience tonight. I would ask if you have anything for the good of the city. We have a portion for public comment. Please feel free to come forward and make comments at the podium, the microphone. Yes, we do. If you just check, make sure the microphone's on when you get up here and just state your name, where you live, and what you'd like to say.
My name's Dave Horn and I own a business downtown and live at 104 North Franklin Street. First off, I wanted to speak that we were at the meeting for our downtown traffic plan. And some of the concerns that were raised at night was notification and public knowing about what's going on in the downtown area. To my surprise again, today I see the minutes tonight as a piece of property that's going to be purchased. There was some talk around the neighborhood today of what property it was. Nobody was for sure what it was. In researching it, we find out that it's possibly a parking lot situation in the downtown area. Just want to let people know that we also have a lot of debt in the city that has been incurred in the last few years with new buildings and stuff like that. In the parking situation that's been downtown, the size of this lot that's being purchased, if it's the correct one that we're thinking of, it's not going to generate a lot of parking spaces. It's kind of putting this before actually the traffic situation downtown. We're going to find that parking lot unless we start charging for it, having some ordinances that cover the amount of time somebody can park in there. You're going to find that in that general area, you have a lot of small businesses that don't have employee parking. So that parking lot will be nothing but employees all day. We have that problem over in Franklin Street now and then several of the streets that are a block away from the actual downtown to where all of the side streets are full of these cars. And it's all day long. If this lot consists of about 20 to 25 cars in the downtown, I guarantee you it's going to be filled up with the 20 or 25 cars of employees all day. So it doesn't benefit anybody but the employees downtown, a small group of these businesses. That the city has allowed businesses to open and knock back the parking requirements in their parking lots. This has been a practice of the city for a long time. It's caught up to us in situations like this. And now we're trying to address that situation by buying homes up and tearing them down and make parking lots. Hopefully, if that decision does not get made tonight, that we put this back on the back burner. There's some people that are pretty upset that, you know, this has come this far without all of this traffic issue being designed and laid out first. So just wanted to kind of let everybody know what's out there and what we've heard today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Seeing no one, we will move on. Under item five, if you've had a chance to review the minutes, I would need a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Ricky. And would the second be you, Mr. Manley?
Sure.
Thank you. Very good. Are there any additions to the minutes as presented? Seeing none, all is in favor of approving the minutes from May 13, 2013, common council meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. Thank you. Under Mayor's Business, I would like to mention hometown days on the 6th through the 9th. We do have fireworks, 9:30 on Thursday, and the parade is Sunday at 12. I would encourage everyone to come down and support hometown days. Most of the work that's done there is done by volunteer groups that benefit the community as a whole. So any of your support would be greatly appreciated. I know Brava and Mr. Zog will do a good job this year. So please come down and support. And then I just wanted to mention that on June 4th and 5th, Alder Ricky and myself and the mayor will be meeting to interview the candidates for the empty Alder position. We'll be getting back to you with recommendations after that meeting, those meetings. Under item seven, we have the administrator's report with Mr. Burns.
Yeah, I have a couple of updates this evening. First, there was a public informational meeting on the downtown study that took place on May 14. As a follow-up to that, there is going to also be a presentation from the engineers and planners at MSA who are conducting that study that's going to be taking place before the plan commission. That meeting is going to take place on June 3. The plan commission meeting starts at 6:30, although the presentation on the downtown study is scheduled for 7:30. They're going to be presenting the information that was presented at the public meeting, giving an opportunity for plan commissioners to ask questions, provide feedback. And the city has also sent out notices to members of the public and residents and business owners in the downtown area. We've done an expanded notice from what was done for the prior meeting. And it'll be the opportunity for people to attend that meeting, to get information, as well as have discussions with MSA, city staff, or others following the presentation. Coming up later this week, on Thursday, May 30, the Police and Fire Commission is going to be meeting at 6 o'clock at City Hall. They're going to be considering the position description for a city fire chief. And then have scheduled to adjourn into a closed session to discuss the process for the hiring of the city fire chief and likely discussions with the current district chief, Joe Giver, as well as the attorney representing the Police and Fire Commission. Earlier today, staff participated in a call with Moody's Investment Rating Service for the city's bond sale. That's part of the process where we present information on the financial status of the city. And they consider that as part of their evaluation in determining the city's bond rating. We're expecting that bond rating to come out later next week. And then the bond sale is scheduled for Monday, June 10, which would be the date of our next council meeting. We are also planning a committee of the whole meeting for Monday, June 17, anticipating a 6 o'clock start time. And the focus of that committee of the whole would be to look at the city's financial management policy and fiscal issues and preparations for discussions of the city budget process later this year. With that, I'd be available to answer any questions.
Did you say the 17th?
Yeah, the committee of the whole we're talking about would be the 17th, which would be the third Monday in June.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no questions, we'll move on to item eight and the engineer's report with Mr. Gunlock.
Thank you. Report on the ongoing construction in the city this evening. The 2013 street rehabilitation project. Contractor has removed approximately two-thirds of the curb and gutter and driveway approaches in Mark Drive, Thompson Street area. And also has about that much replacement curb and gutter already back in. He has completed all the curb and gutter removal and driveway removal and replacement in the Melody Circle area, except for a few driveways that will be completed this week. As soon as concrete is replaced, all the concrete's replaced in the Mark Drive, Thompson Street and Melody Circle area, they will be pulverizing the street, regrading it, and put down the asphalt pavement. Contractor is currently doing some saw cutting in the Eastview Heights neighborhood. And will be moving in shortly there to start the concrete removals. I believe the city is also in the Eastwood, or yeah, Eastview Heights neighborhood right now doing manhole and inlet repairs. Work for this project is scheduled for completion on or before August 15. Next project is the Lincoln Street culvert replacement. The concrete, or the contract for the culvert replacement has been awarded to Hammersley Stone. And the contractor will commence work in approximately three weeks. During the time the culvert is being replaced, Lincoln Street from City Hall to Williams Street will be closed to traffic. A detour route will be established along Verona Avenue, Franklin Street, and Switzer Drive. The culvert is being replaced to relieve downstream flooding and to improve a portion of the downstream channel. This project is scheduled for completion by the middle of September. The next project is the well number five, Well House and Reservoir. Contractor continues to construct the Well House and reservoir walls. All the walls have been installed for the Well House. And the contractor is preparing to pour the reinforced concrete roof. The reservoir has two walls remaining to pour in the roof. Once the roof is on the Well House, the mechanical subcontractors will start installing the piping, heating, and ventilating and pumping equipment. This project is scheduled for completion August 31. And the last project this evening is Cathedral Point Phase 3. Last week, utilities construction started on Cathedral Point Phase 3. This phase of the subdivision will add 32 single-family lots. The contractor's schedule indicates that all work should be completed by the end of July. That completes the report for this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gunlock. Do we have any questions for the city's engineer?
Yeah, I have a quick question.
Yes, Mr. Diaz.
When is the, sorry, if I missed this, when is the construction on Melody Circle going to be totally done? If you can guess.
In within a month.
Within a month, okay. Thank you.
Concrete, the concrete's replaced. They have to go in there probably next week and mill it or pulverize it. Then they will compact it and repave it, but I would say within a month.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the committee reports and finance. Mr. Manley has graciously agreed to take that for me.
Under item 9A1, I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $280,125.58.
Second.
You've heard the motion. Are there any questions for the committee about payment of the bills this month? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor of payment of the monthly bills signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. Thank you. Anything else for the good of the council?
Nothing further.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Manley. Under Old Business, we have discussion of possible action, potential purchase of property in the downtown. Is it our intention to go into closed session?
Yeah, staff would recommend going into closed session so that staff can provide an update on the available property. We are not anticipating any action in open session this evening.
And just for the record on the public, no action would be taken in closed session either. This is just for discussion purposes. If we were to take action, that would be, as Mr. Burns said, taken in open session. So I would need someone to make a motion for, as the statute provides here, under item 10A1. Mr. Manley.
I'd like to make a motion to convene in closed session as authorized by Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. Second? I would need a second to go into closed session. So? Anyone? A second to go to closed session. For the good of the committee, I'll ask last time, I would need a second to go into closed session. Seeing none, that motion would die as it is. And we will, I guess, take that up at a date uncertain.
I have a question. Is there any reason why we couldn't discuss this in open session? Because, not that I'm a lawyer, but my reading of the state statutes is that it's May, and we're not actually required to go into closed session.
If I could just answer, the reason we would go in a closed session is because staff feels at this point that it would be better to discuss it in a closed session. Their recommendation was to do it on a close, so the motion was made under a second. There's certainly no reason why we couldn't have discussion under open session. If I'm understanding, please go ahead, Mr. Burns.
Yeah, traditionally, municipalities would go into closed session for an item like this. It's because there's items that could be discussed, which it could impact the city's negotiating position. Particularly if there are certain properties discussing level of interest and potential purchase price of the property would be something that you'd prefer to have kept in closed session rather than communicating that to the other party that'd be involved in the negotiations. I guess, you know, there's not a legal requirement that the city would have to go into closed session, but that would be the reason for the recommendation to go into closed session. I guess, given the lack of a second, I would be looking for direction from the body of whether they would want me to try to provide an update on what I can in open session, holding back anything that may be subject to negotiations, or we could hold off on this and schedule it for a future meeting.
Is there anyone who'd like to comment? Mr. Diaz.
I'd prefer the first option, if you don't mind.
And again, what was the first option? What's the first option you would prefer, if you just wouldn't mind?
The way you talk about as much as possible as you can in open session, and we try to go from there.
Mr. Manley.
Look, I'm all for open and transparent government. And I think that eventually the city gets to the point where we can have an open discussion about the merits of purchasing property or not purchasing property. In this case today, in the future, we become involved in litigation and we discuss legal strategy in closed session because it's in the interest of the city and the residents to not telegraph our legal position. There's a lot of reasons why you meet in closed session. I agree with staff. I think if we're talking about a negotiating position in a situation where we're proposing to spend a significant or potentially significant amount of taxpayer resources on a piece of property, we ought to avail ourselves of the means to do that and spend the least amount of taxpayers' money in that process. And I think that discussing our strategies in the open and not availing ourselves of the opportunity to discuss these items in closed session is not to the, in the best interest of the taxpayer in the city. And I would urge that we, to the extent that we're going to have this discussion, we do it in closed session. I would not be in favor of, nor do I think it would be productive to discuss this in open session. As I said, once we reach a decision point, or prior to reaching a decision point, it's very appropriate to have a discussion in the open, and we should have a discussion in the open about doing that. But negotiating position is not something that you do in the open. And I, despite, I think, the best intentions of others here in the body to have an open dialogue, I think we'd actually be doing a disservice to taxpayers if we tried to negotiate this out in the open.
Thank you. Mr. Steiner.
Thank you, President. There's a strong resistance from several taxpayers down around downtown. They want to know what's going on. They are not happy with us negotiating in quiet and then springing out the information before they have a chance to react. There are several people that do not want the city to be in the business of buying and selling land that belongs on the property tax roll. There are several people that wish we would be more open. I understand it. I've been on this board for a while, and I understand what goes on behind closed doors, and I've agreed with most of it. But this is a very, very big issue that's going to affect a lot of citizens' way of life in and around North and South Main Street, East and West Verona Road. They have a right to know. And I'm glad that we're trying to get this in the open and talk about it because it may not be in the best interest of the taxpayers of Verona. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Mr. Manley.
I appreciate my colleagues' comments, and I don't disagree that there are people who would be opposed to doing this. I don't disagree that there are people who frankly don't want to see downtown change. There's lots of people who do. And I don't think the point here isn't, let's never discuss this and let's never do anything in the open. It's decisions about whether or not we would choose to move forward or what an offer might be should be a negotiation that we do privately. And then if we decide that we're not going to make an offer, or if we decide that we should, before we finalize it, yeah, that's a discussion that should happen in open. But bargaining strategy, negotiating strategy, that's just something that we typically don't do in open session. In open session, we have the debate on the merits, and that's where that debate should happen. I agree with you on that point. But that's not what we're talking about here.
Anyone else? Alder Ricky.
I, I just think that the big question is whether or not we want revitalization or growth of downtown Verona. And that does go hand in hand with the traffic flow downtown. I think that the traffic flow needs to be handled in conjunction with added parking and not as two separate items on a list of things to do. So I appreciate that this resident and business owner brought that to our attention, to keep it in the forefront of our minds. And that I think whatever Mr. Burns can share in open session, I'd like him to do that. And then I would second going to closed session after that is all shared.
At this point, can we still take action in that fashion, or would we have to reintroduce a motion?
We have not moved on with any other motions. I think you could still come back to that. Excuse me. No other motions or business have been introduced. I think you could still go back to that motion if desired, or to a new motion. I can give a brief update that I feel comfortable delivering in open session, and perhaps then the body can decide what they choose to do. There are properties that are listed for sale, or we anticipate from comments that we've heard are likely to be listed for sale that are located in the downtown, including areas that have been identified as potential redevelopment areas in both the city's comprehensive plan as well as our downtown TIF district. As everyone's aware, the downtown study project, which MSA is conducting for the city, is ongoing. And as part of that, we do anticipate that there will be an updated redevelopment plan. But staff wanted to bring these opportunities to the council's consideration, given that properties are currently listed for sale now and that there's the potential that there could be action prior to that redevelopment plan being completed. Following the last meeting, I did have a discussion with the city attorney about some more procedural questions related to the purchase of property and specifically relating to the process for the city acquiring property, either through a voluntary negotiation or through the city's eminent domain process. The opinion of the city attorney is that the city is not required to follow the statutory condemnation process if there is a voluntary sale. However, his advice is that we should consider that process in the event that the city would not be able to reach a negotiated price for the sale of a property. And if it is something that the city at some point in the future, whether now or in the farther future, would feel that there would be a need to go through the eminent domain process for public purchase. So his recommendation is that we would consider that. We would consider items such as potential relocation costs. And we would draft our offer and an addendum to the offer to reflect certain requirements of that process. And just to write a quick summary of the eminent domain process, the city does have the ability, along with other municipalities, that they can acquire property for the public interest. There's a process where you need to provide notice to the property owner. You need to get an appraisal on the property. The property owner has an opportunity to get appraisal at your expense. There's a jurisdictional offer made. There's a time period review, and ultimately, potential review by the courts as part of that process. What we potentially would be looking at here would be if there's a property that's currently listed, that has a willing seller, and if the city does determine it would be in its interest trying to negotiate a potential purchase. And that discussion about negotiations, about potential level of interest and parameters for negotiation, is an item that I would recommend that we have that discussion in closed session. And then once we either reach or fail to reach a negotiated point, then I think that's an appropriate point to have an open session discussion about whether or not the city wants to proceed with the purchase. But the difficulty is if you have that discussion in open session first, it's hard then to go into negotiations if you've already had a public discussion about what your parameters are for a maximum amount you're willing to pay or the amount you want to invest in a property. So I guess at that point, I'd probably leave the discussion there unless there's a desire to go into closed session and discuss any more specifics of the property.
Are there any questions for Mr. Burns before we move on to the motion and the second? Seeing none, we do have a motion and a second on the table. I will call a question. All those in favor of going into closed session?
A roll call vote.
Oh, thank you very much. Under the roll call, I do appreciate that. Under the roll call, Ms. Lynch, if you could.
Alder Person Diaz.
No.
Alder Person Doyle.
Aye.
Alder Person Manley.
Aye.
Alder Person Ricky.
Aye.
Alder Person Steiner.
No.
And Alder Person yours.
Aye.
Thank you. I believe the ayes would have it. We have voted to go into closed session.
Session concerning the potential purchase of property in downtown Verona. I think Mr. Burns has a few comments about some of the things that he feels comfortable bringing forward at this point as far as the process. I would like to illustrate a couple of points that while this potential purchase is following in conjunction with the downtown redevelopment and the traffic study, it's just a coincidence. The city is not actively pursuing this type of thing in an effort to promote one type of downtown redevelopment or another, or in that fact, or in that matter, a specific traffic plan. At this point, we're still in that process, and I think Mr. Burns is going to talk a little bit about the process at this point.
Yes, thank you. Just to back up a moment since we talked earlier about the downtown study that's being conducted in the public meetings, and a lot of the focus of that has been on the traffic and transportation component, but that study is intended to be a comprehensive study. That's certainly one component, and it's an important component, but there will be discussions about redevelopment and public discussions about character of the downtown, what's desired for redevelopment, and planned redevelopment areas. As I mentioned earlier, the meeting that's going to be taking place at the Plan Commission on June 3rd is intended to provide another opportunity for Plan Commission members, council, and member of the public to participate in that process, and there will be additional public meetings as we get into details about the redevelopment plan going forward. That said, as we continue to work on the redevelopment plan, it, staff felt that it's important that as properties become available in the downtown, that we bring that to the council's attention, that rather than waiting until the plan is complete and potentially seeing that properties may have sold or may have transferred hands in that time, that it's important that we take a look at the opportunities when they're available and discuss whether or not that's something that could fit into a redevelopment plan. So at this point, while the city does not have a specific plan or proposal for these properties, we did feel that it's important to look at the opportunities that are available. One of the properties that is currently listed on the market right now is 102 East Park Street, which is located in the quadrant on the southeast side of Main Street and Verona Avenue, and that is an area that was identified in the city's comprehensive plan, as well as its downtown TIF district as a potential block for redevelopment, and that's something that likely will be at least looked at as part of the redevelopment plan in this study going forward. Currently, staff is investigating the condition of the property and its availability. We've had some initial discussions with the council about potential parameters for negotiation. There was no action taken in closed session this evening, and as staff learns more information, they'll be bringing that back to the council's attention at a future meeting. And the council has also discussed the process and the desire that if there would be any further action on that property leading to a formal offer, that that's something that would be discussed at a future meeting, which would be noticed and include an open session discussion on that, as well as potential use of that or any other property in the downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Any further comments in the open session? Seeing none, I will move on to item 11, new business, Ms. Lynch, operators licenses.
All right, we have a handful this evening from Tamara Beltsner, Mary Hanneman, Amber Holmes, Susan Lamancia, Carrie Roerig, Hunter Turkelson, Tashina Solenberger, Bradley Kimmel, and Casey Dudley contingent upon the completion of the background check by the police department. And the reason for that, we don't usually do that contingent upon, they are usually done before they come here, but that one's for hometown days, so we need to get that going. And then a couple of these are, other of these are for hometown days as well.
Very good. Mr. Manley.
I'd like to move approval in the, if possible, this time and in the future, if you could let us know which establishment the operator is associated with, I think that would be helpful for us.
Sure, that can absolutely be done.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. We have a motion and a second by Mr. yours, thank you. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And approval of the operator's license has passed. We'll move on to item 12, announcements. Mr. Steiner.
Thanks, President. A few social events taking place in our downtown this week. Thursday, we have the old-time vittlers that are coming to the senior center. They will be entertaining starting at 12:15 in the afternoon for about an hour and a half. On Friday, we have the older people of our city, 90-plus people are celebrating their birthdays on Friday at the senior center, and that will start at 11:00 a.m. with a recognition and a pitcher. Last year, we had 23 people in the city that are 90-plus years old, and the pitchers are on display at the senior center, and we're hoping for a few more, but we did lose a couple of our friends this past year. Then on Saturday, we have a walk through the cemetery with ex-mayor Art Crescent. If you are fascinated with history that has happened in our city, please meet Mr. Crescent at the cemetery at 11:00 a.m. this Saturday, June 1. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Any other announcements? Mr. yours.
First of all, I'd like to second the cemetery walk. Those are wonderful programs, and Verona does have a vast history with a lot of people who did a lot of amazing things. Secondly, this is the only way I know how to contact you, since I don't have a last name, but I want to thank Zeke for writing a letter to me about chickens. I will certainly look into the issue and get back to you if I can figure out your last name and where to send a letter, but thank you for contacting me.
Thank you, Mr. yours. Any other announcements? Seeing none, I need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Manley, thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. And that is non-debatable. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And we are adjourned. Thank you.